Hello.
Hi, Councilman. We're having some...
Okay.
Hi, I'm Santiago.
Mr. Collins is having some...
Oh, very excited to have a new number now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman? Yep. I said, Mr. Collins is having some technical difficulties, so he's trying to work it out. Hopefully, we can get it resolved.
No problem. I'll be here.
Okay, Council President, I think we have temporarily resolved my issue. They're gonna pull the computer and break it down on Friday. Uh, but we should be good to go for tonight.
Okay, so...
And they're gonna stay here in case something happens, so in case something does happen, I'll let you know throughout the course of the meeting, okay?
Okay, so can you get back on the screen or you can...
Yes, ma'am. I just, that, that is just a matter of flipping that little switch up. And he has left the room, so I can take my mask off now. Council President, before the meeting starts, can I just make one administrative, uh, announcement about the walk-ons?
Yes, when, after the roll call.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm in attendance. It's, it's Councilwoman Vaughn.
Good evening, Councilwoman.
Hi, Council President.
Good evening.
I see Council Vice President, I see Council, I'm gonna see, you're not okay. I see Clerk Collins. Hmm. Oh, I see, I see Council President, okay.
The setup is a little bit different because the channel was previously owned by somebody who's no longer with the city. So, uh, we could not continue on that channel, so we had to change channels. And the setup of this channel is a little bit different. That's why the, uh, visual aesthetic difference.
Mr. Collins, could you ask everyone that's, um, participating in this meeting to, um, mute their phones if they're, um, they're not a part of the legislative body?
Yes, uh, at the request of the Council President, if the, uh, members of the public and the directors could mute their phones until they are recognized by the council, uh, that would be greatly appreciated, cut down on background noise and minimize interruptions. Uh, thank you very much for your cooperation in that matter.
This meeting is being, this meeting is being called to order. Adequate numbers of this meeting have been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trent Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call.
Yes, ma'am. I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
President.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
President.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
President.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Hello, sir.
Ms. Vaughn.
Present.
Ms. McBride. Count, I'm sorry, Council President McBride.
Present.
Thank you. I will now call the directors. Adam Cruz.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Present.
Mr. Cherry.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Manow. Good evenings. Uh, who is here representative of the Law Department?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Jack Fulan Abdul Razak and Sally Samuel.
Good evening. Good evening.
Director Coley. Director Coley.
Rise up.
Chief Mazer.
Present. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Chief, uh, uh, Director Gilal.
Present.
Mr. Honatieri. Director Honatieri. Director Richardson. Director Richardson. Mr. Lavenberg.
Good evening, President.
Good evening, sir. And Ms. Shona. Mr. Harrison, have you arrived, sir? I do see you in the room.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Council President, we have a quorum. The directors are present, except as noted.
Did you wanna make your, uh, announcement about the walk-ons?
I have a couple of administrative announcements. We had, uh, intended, and I had forwarded to the council earlier tonight, uh, a number of walk-ons. Uh, it's my understanding that the MOU waiver has not yet come through for two of them, uh, but should be due tomorrow. Uh, so they'll be added to the council agenda for Thursday. In addition, uh, Mr. Lavenberg has requested, uh, that items number seven fifteen and seven eighteen be pulled from the docket.
What about, um, what about, uh, twenty, what, what certain announcement you made on, what if it's twenty dash fifty-four?
Uh, twenty dash, thank you, ma'am. Uh, twenty dash fifty-four, uh, Director Coley has requested that that be pulled, uh, for amendment. Uh, and we would have to formally table that because we have set a public hearing. We would have to formally table that indefinitely, uh, till such time as could be amended. And then it can be reintroduced. So it, it would have to be, uh, tabled indefinitely for amendment. Uh, we could do that when we come to second reading.
And, and Madam President, if I may, uh, also, bond ordinance twenty dash five-five, second reading for the, um, bond for the, uh, for the lead line replacement, we would also like to table that to the, uh, December twenty-second meeting. The local finance board is having the hearing tomorrow. So we would like to table that until the December the twenty-second.
All righty. So, listen, wait, it's, Mr. Collins, can you just go back over everything that is not going to be on this docket?
Yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Lavenberg has asked that, uh, resolutions seven fifteen and seven eighteen be pulled from this docket. In addition, uh, walk-on resolution seven twenty-two through seven twenty-six will be heard on Thursday, not tonight as originally anticipated. Uh, and then, uh, it, it, there will apparently be motions to table both ordinance twenty dash fifty-four and twenty dash five, uh, for amendments, uh, and, uh, for the other one for, to allow the local finance board to, uh, review the application that was passed at the prior meeting. So, uh, those will have to be done by a formal table motion and a vote, uh, but that's not a problem. And seven fifteen and seven eighteen don't, we don't need to take any further administrative action there.
Seven fifteen and seven eighteen?
Yes, ma'am. And they are both for the Trenton Water Works.
Council President?
Okay, um, I think Councilman Blakely was trying to...
Uh, President McBride, uh, do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, would like to walk on a resolution as well. Um, I just sent, uh, an email, uh, with the content of the resolution. I'm happy to discuss, to read the title. It was, um, developed by the Law Department, and I'm going to, uh, read it. I just sent you an email with, uh, the text of the resolution, and it states, "The resolution authorizing City Council to issue a rights notice to discuss the job performance of Matthew Conlin as the municipal clerk." And it says, "Whereas Matthew Conlin, uh, is currently employed as the municipal clerk of the City of Trenton, New Jersey, whereas pursuant to Mr. Conlin's offer letter from the City Council of the City of Trenton dated August sixth, two thousand twenty, Mr. Conlin was required to complete a ninety-day evaluation period in his performance as the municipal clerk. Whereas more than ninety days has passed since Mr. Conlin assumed the position of the municipal clerk for the City of Trenton, whereas the City Council must meet in closed session to discuss matters involving the evaluation of performance of a city employee and in accordance with NJSA ten four dash twelve B, uh, unless the employee requests that the dis, that a discussion be held in open session and there now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton as follows. Number one, the City Council of the City of Trenton hereby resolves to issue a rights notice to discuss Mr. Collins as the municipal clerk. And number two, City Council hereby resolves to enter into executive session to discuss this matter unless Mr. Collins requests that the discussion be held in open session." I sent Mr. Conlin, um, the, um, email. I sent all members of this body.
I did not receive it.
Okay, I just sent it. Um, I'm happy to send it again, but I literally...
Point of order, Council President, a sitting clerk cannot undergo an evaluation or a temporary ninety-day period. It is an appointment according to the New Jersey statutes. It is an appointment for three years. There is no ninety-day evaluation period for a sitting clerk.
President McBride, I am only outlining the resi, what was stated in the offer letter. It stated that the offer letter, I can actually provide and read the offer letter as well. It stated that there would be an evaluation period...
Doesn't matter. It violates New Jersey state law. I'm a clerk. I know. Do not do an evaluation period on me, sir.
Excuse me. I, I'm happy to read, uh, the offer letter. Uh, the offer letter states here, it states that, uh, as a new hire, you are required to complete a ninety-day evaluation period of your performance as the municipal clerk. In addition, you must continue to perform all duties and responsibilities in a satisfactory manner in order to be retained in this position. Uh, Council President McBride signed this offer letter on August sixth, two thousand twenty, and you accepted it. And, uh, you know, quite frankly, the resolution is there. And, uh, it also states, "As a condition of employment with the City of Trenton, you will be required to become a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton within ninety days of your start date. Failure to do so will result in forfeiture of your employment." I think all of these options discussed, uh, in executive session, which I am asking for the resolution to be added, uh, to the docket so that this council can vote on, uh, the, um, issues outlined in the letter. This is a letter that I didn't write. This is a letter that Council President wrote that outlined the, um, residence requirement as well as, uh, the fact that there was a ninety-day evaluation period. I didn't write that. It's in black and white, and you accepted the terms, and I just simply want to, um, have the ability to have this council. And if my colleagues decide not to vote on this resolution, they have the right to do that, but I didn't make this up. I'm not making it up.
You're fine, but the point of order is you must issue a rights notice before you discuss...
Please not interrupt me. Please not interrupt me. Can you please not interrupt me? Uh, you, you are not talking now. I am. Uh, this is a resolution that is because of the offer, the offer letter that was sent by the Council President that outlined, uh, the ninety-day evaluation period. You signed it. You did not disagree with it. You did not say that it was, uh, problematic when you accepted the terms of employment. And so I wanna know, are you a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton? And I also would like to have a discussion among my colleagues. You're invited. If you wanna have it in public, we can have it in public as well, and it's all...
Councilman Blakely, you committed multiple felonies against me. Okay? I ain't not going to answer your response in this assassination. I'm not gonna answer your questions.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk to you. Sorry.
Mr. Conlin, Mr. Conlin, please don't interrupt the councilman when he's speaking. Please don't.
Uh, and I just wanna say for the record, I am, um, appalled at Mr. Conlin. First, he threatened to sue me, which he didn't. And number two, he is threatening to, uh, accusing me of felonies when that's preposterous and that's ridiculous. I am tired of being threatened by this gentleman for me doing my job. Uh, and I am simply asking for the offer letter that you submitted, President McBride, the contents of the offer letter to actually be executed. You have not had a discussion about Mr., uh, Conlin, and I'd like to have it. And, and, and if my colleagues choose not to vote, uh, for the resolution, then it fails. But I think that we should at least consider it. Um, I was under the impression that, uh, you know, that would happen, and so I, it, it's very clear. But I'm not gonna be threatened by an employee of the City of Trenton. He threatened to sue me, which he hasn't done. And I'm not going to sit back and allow him to accuse me of being a criminal, which I'm not. I sent the email. Um, I sent, I sent all members of this body an email. I sent you, Council President, I sent the clerk an email. And, uh, you know, Mr. Conlin has a propensity, uh, to threaten people with legal actions when he doesn't like what they have to say. I simply am asking to have a performance evaluation that he accepted without question when he accepted the, uh, terms and conditions of employment. And these were terms and conditions that you outlined, President McBride. You outlined them, not me. And I don't wanna be condescending. I don't wanna be bellicose. I don't, I just want us to have a discussion about Mr. Conlin's, uh, performance of his duties. And I, I think that is just a very appropriate question, uh, to ask. I'm not saying anything, any way, one way or another. The rule of this body may be that they think he's doing a good job, but to threaten me as a criminal because I'm simply asking to have a, um, a, 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 an executive session to discuss his performance is really unfortunate. And an example of the litigious and the lack of, well, I have my own opinions about Mr. Um, Conlin. I'd like to discuss them in the executive session, and I'd like, you know, members of this body to have the ability to vote on, evaluate his performance. Thank you.
Vote, can we move, can we motion, Council President? Well, I, I just wanna say something, if I may, pertaining to Councilman's, uh, resolution.
Yeah.
I just wanna briefly say that, um, every member on this council needs to be respected. Uh, any proposals that we put forward, uh, they should be considered and voted on properly. So, um, so I, I am for, uh, 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 Councilman Blakely's, um, uh, request for an executive session to, uh, to, to, to speak with Mr., um, Mr. Collins, and I think that's fair. Uh, Mr. Collins has taken on the position. Uh, Mr. Blakely, uh, articulated very well what, what the intent is. And I don't see anything, um, uh, I'm gonna use Darrell's words, nefarious about it. So, um, so, uh, I think that we, as a council, need to, uh, start, um, supporting one another and, uh, and always with, it, it, with, with always the intent, uh, uh, with good intentions and, uh, the, the best way forward for the City of Trenton. Um, and Mr. Collins took on the, took on the role with all those terms, and he should be able to speak to him. And, and as Councilman Blakely stated, if all is well and, and he has complied with what, you know, the terms of his employment, then, then we move forward. We move on. Uh, no foul, you know, so it's all good. And I will be supporting it, and I'm happy to second it, you know, to, to get it, uh, voted on by the council. Thanks.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell.
Well, um, I find it very interesting that this is the first clerk that's been held to these standards. We have never before required a clerk to be reviewed except at the end of its four years. We have never, excuse me?
No, I'm sorry.
We have never, we, we have never held them to the requirements because according to the requirements in the city, the clerk is, is regarded as same as the directors, that they are exempt from the residency. So I will be letting you know on that.
President McBride, I just wanna say for the record, uh, in your offer letter written on August sixth, two thousand twenty, you stated that as a condition of employment with the City of Trenton, you, you being Matthew Conlin, will be required to become a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton within ninety days of your start date. And this is emphasis my own. Failure to do so will result in forfeiture of your employment. Also, it states here, and I wanna add to the record, as a new hire, you are required, uh, I'll repeat, required, to complete a ninety-day evaluation period of your performance as the municipal clerk. In addition, you must continue to perform all duties and responsibilities in a satisfactory manner in order to be retained in this position. This, I didn't write this letter. I didn't write this letter at all. Um, this was a letter, um, written by Council President McBride. Um, and all I'm saying is that if Mr. Conlin felt very strongly that he should not be held to the residency requirement or that he should not, um, be, um, held to the ninety-day evaluation period, he could have asked for a different, uh, offer letter. He did not. He accepted, I have a, the letter, um, from, uh, Mr. Conlin, uh, stating that he accepted the terms of the, um, letter written by, uh, Council President McBride on letterhead. Um, and, uh, I think that it's very clear, um, why, uh, you know, one reason why I supported Mr. Conlin was because he, um, was going to move to the City of Trenton. Uh, if he was not going to move in the City of Trenton, I would not have supported, uh, his candidacy. Um, and, uh, so, I mean, the offer letter is very clear. It's why I supported. I felt, uh, that the ninety-day evaluation would be a really good way. And apparently, the Council President believed the same thing. That's why she wrote it, uh, in the offer letter. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm not trying to be mean. I just think that, uh, we should, um, govern ourselves by the terms and conditions, uh, that Mr. Conlin accepted this position in. And if Mr. Conlin, um, believes that he's done a great job, then he should have the ability to tell us why, and we should have the ability to assess his judgment. Um, this is quite simply what is outlined. This is not something that Councilman Blakely is pulling out of thin air. It's not something that I'm making up. I'm simply, I want to adhere. I think that what Council President McBride did was a great idea of having, um, the residency requirement as, as having the, um, ninety-day evaluation. I agree. I think we should do that more often. And so I really appreciate the fact that Council President McBride outlined, uh, those conditions on Mr. Collins', um, you know, uh, uh, employment, that he accepted without question. I can also read, um, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Conlin's, uh, acceptance of the, um, give me one second. I will pull it up. Because Mr. Conlin did accept, um, the offer letter. Give me one second. I really appreciate you being, uh... Okay. Uh, let's see. Give me one second. Mr. Conlin writes, um, on August seventh, a day after Council President's, um, offer letter. He says, "Regarding acceptance of offer of employment," he says, "Dear Council President McBride, uh, please kindly accept this letter, accepting the offer of employment by the City of Trenton to serve as a municipal clerk. I am very excited to be, begin our new journey together." And so, you know, he accepted the terms as outlined in her, in the Council President's letter without question. And, um, I just wanna make sure that, uh, he is indeed a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton, which we can discuss in executive session further, as well as I'd like to, uh, complete that required, uh, ninety-day evaluation period in terms of his performance. Um, I have some questions about his performance that I'd like to discuss in, um, executive session.
Um, thank you. So I do wanna say one thing for the record. Um, Mr. Conlin has been, um, looking for, uh, a residency here. Um, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson has met him and taken him through several areas of the city. Um, we have, uh, she met him about, uh, two weeks ago to take him on, uh, a, one particular street that was not too far from, uh, the job. And they also, um, went out into the East Trenton, into East Trenton. It's been a little slow. Um, we were going to find out what he needed to do as far as the residency, um, uh, um, requirement. He, there has been some definite possibilities for him, and we have seen that in writing. So to, um, his credit, he has been looking for residency here in the city. Um, a lot of, uh, I think he sent us, uh, a response back about the, um, place on, uh, around a corner from the, uh, his place of employment, which is the City Hall. Um, is the, uh, individuals, uh, have two- and three-week appointments based on the COVID. But Council, um, Vice Chair has been out in the community. She met him, um, on, um, on occasions to look at several, uh, places to resign. And so we will move forward with the vote. I just wanted to put that on the record.
President McBride.
We will, we are gonna move forward with the vote. Um, Mr. Collins, if you could call for the vote, please. We're gonna vote for Mr. Blakely's motion to walk on, uh, to walk on a resolution that none of us have seen. And Mr. Collins, would you call for the vote, please? Are you there?
President McBride, I, I would just wanna say this, if you don't mind, be very succinct, um...
No, 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 no. Councilman, I'm asking for Mr. Collins to call for the vote. He was having problems a minute ago.
Well, he's not answering, but I wanna say that as per the guidelines of the, um, offer letter that you sent, I just wanna read for the record. It states here as a condition of employment with...
I do feel the floor to you. I think you've had enough time. I'm trying to get Mr. Collins on to make sure that his screen is up.
Uh, Council President McBride, is, is the Law Department on the phone? I just couldn't ask, can I ask something of the Law Department pertaining to this?
Hey, could I, what? Pardon me. Mr. Council... Wait a minute.
Council President?
Um, Council Vice Chair. Vice Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, excuse me, I'm a...
Can I ask, can I ask something briefly of the Law Department, I mean, of the Law Department? Council Vice Chair, um, uh, Ms. Samuel's indoor, Ms. Abdul Razak, regarding this matter, um, I just wanna make sure that Councilman Blakely's, uh, uh, approach to, um, uh, bringing and Mr. Collins into executive session is, um, is compliant with, uh, the law and the process. Is, is, uh, process and procedures. Is that, is that accurate?
Thank you, madam. May I please speak?
Yes.
Go ahead. Thank you so much. Good evening, esteemed Councilor, um... Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, your question with respect to whether or not, um, his procedure is correct with respect to him, um, bringing the walk-on resolution, do you want to address that first or only, or only the...
Well, the walk-on is fine, but I wanna make sure... This was a lot of...
Thank you so much.
Particularly about the rights, the rights notice, and whether or not, uh, Mr. Collins, based on his role as a, an appointed official, uh, can he be rice or can, or should he not be rice? role as an appointed official, can he be rice or should he not be rice? I mean, what is, I mean, what is the process here in the City of Trenton when it comes to ricing appointed officials?
Again, yes, he can be raised. He can be, man of counsel person, again, the counsel person, Mr. Blakely is correct in offering or suggesting that we rice the gentleman and then proceed because it's, again, touching on his employment, so he has to be notified. The procedure was reviewed and it is pursuant to the state law.
Okay. Okay, but doesn't he have to have notice of this rice note? I mean, is this the notice? How many days does he have? Doesn't he have to have so many days' notice?
I mean, again, and thank you, madam, for your question. He's asking council to discuss it, and he's telling him that he wants to give notice. So, I mean, again, I believe based on the law that his procedure is correct. You know, this is simply a resolution to issue a rights notice, not necessarily to proceed. So this is, so what he's asking is, can we issue a rights notice? If I'm not mistaken, may I just confirm with, with Mr. Blakely that that is what his intention is to discuss issuing rights notice?
Absolutely, and I would just say that.
Mr. Blakely, let, let.
She asked me a question, can I answer it?
I know.
She asked me a question, I want to answer the question.
But I didn't give you the floor. So, you know, you, you just follow the procedures.
Okay, Queen Marge, please.
I'm not a queen, and you need to stop with that.
I'm asking to answer a question from a member of the administration. You're not allowing me to answer? I can't answer her question? I mean, you're, what's the problem? I'm offering a legal?
All you had to say was yes. Is that what you plan to do? You don't have to be going to a big meeting, Mr. Blakely, you've led to taking up about twenty minutes of our time.
Excuse.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
When you pay my bills, you can tell me when, how I can answer a question.
You're out of order, Mr. Blakely.
I'm a.
You're out of order.
Can answer the questions the way that I see fit. And if you have a problem with that, that's your problem, not mine.
You are totally out of order, you're so disrespectful. Go ahead and ask your question, let's get this over with.
Okay, thank you very much. You have the right to your opinion, and, you know, you can do what you want with your opinion. But I just want to say that as per, as per Mr., as per the President, the Council President's own words, Mr. Conlin is not a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton, and it states here in his offer letter, as a condition of employment with the City of Trenton, he is required to become a bona fide resident of the City of Trenton within ninety.
For the first time you've repeated this.
To do so will result in forfeiture of your employment. That's just what the offer letter says, I'm just recounting it. I'd like to discuss that in executive session. Is Mr. Conlin on the call? Because he is supposed to be motioning for this.
Okay, okay, Scott, can we get back to the attorney? We asked your question, did that answer your question?
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Where is Mr. Conlin?
And additionally, additionally, this is for the law department, it's very quickly, and you can revert back, regarding the residency law, because it's good that Council Vice President Caldwell-Wolson mentioned the, 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 the law as it references directors in the city. And there, there are a lot of misstatements about the residency requirement as relates to the director. I don't think Council Vice President Caldwell-Wolson that the directors get a total pass, right? I think the law is clear that that is up to the discretion of the mayor, right, and getting a waiver if, if in fact that they cannot move to the city for whatever the reason. But no one gets a pass from, you know, no one gets to total disregard the residency law of the City of Trenton, no matter your role in the city. So there are specific requirements, and if you can't meet them, it's up to the mayor to provide a waiver of sorts, and the council to approve that waiver, I believe. So, Ms. Abdul Razak, can you verify that for us? I mean, if you can't do it this evening, I understand, but can you get back to the council if an event that this resolution passes? Because I want to make sure that we apply the law fairly to Mr. Conlin and all the directors, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around the residency law of the City of Trenton. But I do believe, as the law is stated, no one gets a pass. We all have to be compliant with the law that governs the city, but I believe there is a waiver process. So, Mr. Razak, again, can you make sure you come back to the council and give us an education on the residency law? Thank you.
Where is, where is?
Madam. So, so let me, let me, Mrs. Razak, before you move forward, we're having a problem with the clerk. I don't know whether it's because the first part of the day, excuse me, I have to take this.
Mr. Conlin, he has a job to do. We are paying him to run this meeting and to be the clerk of this meeting, and he's completely gone, he's not here. Where is he? Where is Mr. Conlin? Where in the world is Mr. Conlin?
Behind you.
Where is he? Where is Mr. Conlin? Is Mr. Conlin on the phone?
Mr. Blakely, let's just wait and see until the Council President comes back with the response.
Where is Mr. Conlin? Where is Mr. Conlin? Where is he?
Mr. Blakely, stop, please.
No, I'm not, I want to know where he is, we're paying him.
He's not kindergarten, okay?
President, I'm asking a question.
So, we don't have, we don't have a clerk to run this meeting, so we're going to have to make a motion to dismiss this meeting until we find out what is occurring here. I need to leave where I'm at to go find out what's going on.
Thank you.
I make a motion, I have to make a motion to, I have to make a motion to close this meeting. Is a motion on the floor to close the meeting?
You can run, but.
So move, okay.
Hey, Council President, there was already a motion on the floor by Mr. Blakely.
Yeah, so we're, we're.
We can't take the vote out of the clerk. Mr. Harrison, we can't take.
Mr. Harrison, we don't have a clerk. We're going to have to make the motion to close the meeting down. Now, Councilwoman Vaughn made the motion, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson seconded. I need Mr., a vote, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Wolson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Harrison?
Councilman Harrison?
Close the meeting?
Yes, we don't have a clerk. We don't have a clerk, Mr. Harrison, is your vote yes or no?
I'm asking the reason, what is the reason?
Do I know? I'm in my home, like probably in yours. I need a vote yes or no.
Yes.
Councilman, Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
And I, my vote is a yes. I will go over to the clerk's office. Council Vice Chair, do you feel like meeting me over there?
Sure.
I'm going to move, all right, so this is to the public, this is to the public, the council meeting can't be ran without a clerk. And so I don't know what has occurred. We had some technical difficulties before we came on, the camera had shut down several times, the IT person was trying to boot it up again, and I hope this is something that I'm going to go over to the city hall just to find out what is going on over there firsthand. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cruz. Thanks, everybody, I thank the public, and we will resume our regular scheduled meeting on Thursday. Now today's meeting is going to have to be combined with the Thursday's meeting. Thank you, I thank each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President.
It need less, he needs to be fired. He literally needs to be fired.
Needs to be fired. Gerald Blakely needs to be fired, he's the idiot.
Joe, you're still live. You guys got to get off that line. Wait a minute, Mr. Cruz, I'm trying to shut this line down, they need to get off that line, they're still on the line.